Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this Monday, March 17th, 2025. Thank you for everyone that's here this evening. If you would please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like for us to recognize a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're so glad everybody survived the storm yesterday. I had spent most of the day at home listening to the fire radio and very few calls went out, so it was a blessing that we didn't have any major disasters yesterday. You have the agenda in front of you, and is there any additions to the agenda? Seeing that there are none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion's been made to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You have the consent agenda in front of you. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Just a reminder, please, when I call your name, come to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak and present your name and address clearly so that the clerk can enter that into the record. And we only have, and it's a fitting name for today being St. Patrick's Day, Shawn O'Connor. Aye, sir. How come you didn't wear your kilt? How come you didn't wear your kilt?
Oh, yeah, I had it and I changed for the meeting, but I...
Well, I had, I got harangued when I got here, and I just left a golf game in a golf cart, and it was windy, so, yeah, it didn't work either. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Shawn O'Connor. I represent Carolina Football Club. My address is 145 Rand Street, Sanford, North Carolina, 27332. We are thrilled to hear about Lee County Athletic Park. Once we heard this was being installed, we immediately inquired with the Parks and Rec Department about the opportunity to rent the fields. We understand how expensive it must have been to build. We would imagine that the county is looking to recoup some of that investment via rental income. We were told what the pricing would be to rent the facility, and we were given a prioritization list. We feel that both the price and prioritization list are fair, in accordance with law and in the spirit of local government maintaining partiality and not favoring one nonprofit over another. We were delighted to see that the Parks and Rec program would receive top priority understandably, and that all nonprofits would receive second priority. We are incredibly excited to become a good-standing partner with Lee County moving forward. We feel that the rental price is fair and consistent with the pricing of other turf rentals in other cities, and we're excited to rent this space when it becomes available and grateful that this was done for the community.
And who do you represent?
Pardon me, sir?
Who do you represent?
Carolina Football Club.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have, I saw Pam. Are you here, Pam?
I'm here. Abigail's on her way.
Abigail's on her way? Well, when she gets here, let me know, okay? Oh, my goodness, I am so sorry. It's what happens when you're flip-flopping back and forth. We'll still be here. All right, under, there's no old business, we have under new business, item 5A, request for the Lee County Code of Ordinances to be amended to forbid concealed carry of firearms at election sites. And we have the board chair...
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Susan Feindell. I am the Chair of the Lee County Board of Elections, and we are requesting that Article 2, Section 2-31A 2 be amended to add in as a prohibited location for carrying concealed weapons to include any space where election activities are taking place. Given the climate, we would very much appreciate this. We are looking at this solely at the request of many of our elections workers and hope that we can continue to keep the public safe at each election site and at each election activity. Since there are excluded properties that do not apply to the authorization to carry a concealed handgun, we feel that election activities certainly should be included as a prohibited property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Feindell? Commissioner Sharp?
None at this time.
Commissioner Reeves?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
None.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You have the request before you. The Lee County Board of Elections requesting the Lee County Commissioners to amend Article 2, Section 2-31A 2 of the Lee County Code and Ordinances to include no concealed weapons where election activity is held. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the amendment to the Lee County Board of Elections, or excuse me, the Article 2, Section 2-31 County Property of Lee County Code of Ordinances to forbid concealed carry weapons where election activity is held. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Yes, sir.
Counsel is trying to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. And just for the record, if we take a vote tonight, that is fine. However, because it's an ordinance change, it does require the two readings, so we'll still have to come back to the board for another reading. So I just wanted to let you all know that, that even if you vote to move forward tonight, we'll have to come back on for a second reading.
Understood.
Because everyone is not here present voting.
Understood. Okay. Thank you for the advice. I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Can I show of hands of those four? And those opposed? Thank you. Motion doesn't carry. Next item on the agenda is Lee County...
I'd like to move to amend the motion because I've had several questions that I presented to counsel and the manager regarding the involvement of the city of Sanford, since the jurisdiction would be in the city. What do you say at the...
Bob Hale Center.
Yes, the Bob Hale Center, which would bring into consideration the Sanford Police Department. I'd also like to find out if there are any other areas, any other counties involved approving such a request in their areas. And I've made the request to counsel to help me get answers for those questions. So I'd like to move that it at least be held over for reconsideration at our next meeting or whenever the information is available that I request.
So, as I understand, your motion is to hold over to our next meeting? The motion is to hold over further action?
That's a whole new thing.
Reconsideration, yes.
We already voted on the motion, so did you just want a whole new thing, just bring it back?
Yes, I'd like to have the information I requested so that I might offer a vote in fairness to both sides.
Understood. So we'll just add it to the next agenda?
Fine, it's not dead.
To address that, okay.
As long as it doesn't die, I'm fine.
Just put that down for our next agenda. All right.
Or as soon as you get the information. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next item is the Lee County Athletic Park fee schedule. And we have Joseph Keel. And by the way, thank you very much this morning, Joseph, you and your staff for putting on a great, dodging the rainstorm and the mud and all that for San Lee Park and the new playground. And the kids worked it out very well.
All right, so in front of you is the fees that have been put together between Parks and Rec staff and the Lee County Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We took several months looking at other sports complexes throughout this region. We did have some trouble finding or getting fees from other complexes. It was almost like they were not wanting to give us that information because we're going to get into a bidding war when the tournaments start coming around. But the ones we were able to find are listed in Excel sheets in your packet along with our fees. And our goal in Lee County is to try to be as flexible and opportunistic with everybody as possible. So instead of doing what other places are doing, whether that's just charging by the game or charging by the hour, we have multiple different fees set up for whatever your agency may need, whether that's a longstanding month rental or a day rental for tournaments, or if you just need to practice, you can schedule by the hour. So we want to make sure that we're being as accessible to the public in different groups as possible. Collins put the map behind you as well, just in case there's questions on the fees. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Joseph. Commissioner Martin?
I don't think anyone's more excited about this athletic field than Kirk and all of those who have just watched this develop from the very beginning. So I'm echoing the thank you for all the work that you've done on this. Questions. It's my understanding that the fees, that we have regulations surrounding how we can set fees because of the type of bond that we took out. My only question to you specifically is in regard to soccer and the nonprofits that are eager to use this. And I did hear tonight from Carolina Football Club who said that they feel it's fair rates and they're excited. But I know there's been some concern with, you know, soccer and the area nonprofit that uses it. Can you speak to that at all?
I can't. I have shared the fee schedule with SASSL. I didn't receive any feedback, good or bad.
Okay.
Their comment was to let them know when the fields are...
Ready to roll?
Ready to go.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That was all I got back.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, but thank you for your homework. And as a gentleman says, it is by law and seems reasonable. And one thing we need to remember, I know this is new and exciting, but I think we're still going to have other fields still available too to use. So it's not like this is a one-shot deal here. We do have other areas.
That's right.
We need to keep that in mind also. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Yeah, the main topic was to make things affordable, correct? And I have, so I'm looking at SASSL, probably goes year-round, as an example. They're probably going to rent four grass fields?
I'm not sure what they're going to rent.
Have they talked to you about what they want to rent, what they're looking to rent, what they need to rent?
No, they have not. They...
You've reached out to them?
I have, and met with them with my staff present and asked what they needed, and the answer that we got was, we don't know yet.
Yeah, so, I mean, you still want to make things, you know, affordable for kids to continue to play, right? That's the key. Thank you.
And to speak on that, just looking at the fees that we put together for those monthly seasonal fees, if you do the breakdown on the seasonal fee, on the monthly fee for the grass fields at $3,500, $100 a month, we looked at a typical soccer season schedule at 40 hours a week, Monday through Friday, Saturday, Sunday afternoons, which is what SASSL's currently doing. That's 160 hours per month. That averages out to $11 per hour perfect. We don't have anything that low at our other parks that aren't even as nice. So we're trying to be fair and keep things as reasonable.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I thought your opening comment was quite interesting. I remember when we were considering this complex, I remember asking the manager to check around and see what others were experiencing, and he actually said basically what she says, like pulling teeth. Nobody really wants to talk about it because my position was, they were moneymakers, you'd already know that. So I know what that means. My question is, are you going to be that way as well in sharing information?
Well, I'll do what the pleasure of the board would like me to do when that time comes. I can tell you from an operational standpoint, we're looking at operational costs just south of $600,000, and with these fees in place, we're looking at, expecting to bring in around $100,000. So we're looking at 18% cost recovery, where we should be around 20% to 25%. So even with these fees, we're not where we need to be, but we had to start somewhere. So we're only bringing in 18% back of what our costs are.
Yeah, I heard that part.
And the Parks Board did approve the fees or recommend the fees. Their one comment was they thought the fees were way too low.
Way too low?
Yeah.
Wow. If you don't mind, just give me an example. Take any one of the ones, I'm on page 67. And I was interested in renting a field.
Is it this piece?
Yes, that's the one. This big one. Explain to me how it actually works.
Okay, so the top field, the top block there is a synthetic multipurpose field?
Yeah.
Collins, if you'll go back to that map for me, please, sir. That'll be fields five and six. You can rent field five or rent field six for $60 per hour. Or if you have a season that you would like to rent it for the month, you have first right to that field from the first of the month to the end of the month. And again, we base our numbers off of 160 hours. So for the synthetic field, it's $6,000 a month to rent that field. That averages out $24 per field per hour. So if you rent it for the entire month, you're getting almost more than 50% off the price. Or if you want to rent it for the day and have a tournament, the tournament's whoever comes in and rents it, that's a moneymaker for them. So we're going to make sure we get our money too.
Right.
So those daily tournament rates go way up. So it's $1,500 a day for Pod A.
Okay. Just for the record, it does seem like we might be going in the hole a little bit there. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, as Mr. Keel will attest to, there's several people on our board that have kids that go around and have to pay these fees. And so they know what the fees are at other places. And, you know, as he said, they said they were very fair and probably not enough. But everyone should just understand that this is going to be a learning process, and we can adjust these fees at any time. If we don't think we're getting enough, we'll change it.
Absolutely.
That's what we talked about.
Our fields outside of this athletic park have only gone up since I've been here. When I got here, they were $10 per hour. Given 2021, after COVID, they'd come and gone. Those fields were rented every single weekend. So the demand was high, and we only had 14 ball fields and one soccer field. So we went up on the price, and they continued to stay booked. And we went up again, and they continued to stay booked. So I think this is a good starting point for us to get in. But again, like I said at the last meeting, we're going to stay flexible.
Thank you. Commissioner Borbick? The questions were on the prices, fee schedule.
Okay, no, I don't have a question on the pricing. I have a question on logistics, but can I ask that now?
Please.
Okay. So say the fields are rented for a month, on a monthly basis, and you weren't given a 30-day notice that there was going to be, I guess, I'm trying to ask if a tournament decides to come in and want to play, are they kind of pushed to the side if someone's already rented it for the month?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to kind of figure out how that, have you had any interest that has, like, has anyone kind of reached out on tournament-type things?
Yes, we've had a lot of baseball, softball places reach out. And what we're currently doing with the Sanford Spinners, you know, they kind of have the same agreement where they have field two at Tremway Park for two straight months. If we have a tournament that comes in or calls and says, hey, this site just got ringed out, or I can work with the spinners, and if they don't have anything, nine times out of 10, they'll tell me, yes, that I can use it, even though they haven't.
Okay.
So it may be just a phone call.
Okay.
That has to happen.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I asked you this morning regarding the monthly rates, and let's say, for example, a club wants to rent it for a month, but we know that they usually will practice in the afternoons during the weekdays. When they're not on the field, is that open to the public?
Absolutely. And we're going to have a set time. Of course, we want to work with the agency that has the fields for the month because they've paid the fee upfront, but we want to work with them as well and make sure that we give the public access to the fields as well. So that may be a 10 to 12 or 10 to 2 that we advertise the fields are open to the public to use.
Thank you. And just a reminder, Joseph has to work for two boards, Parks and Rec Board and then this board, so, plus the bosses over here. So you have the Lee County Athletic Park fee scheduled before you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the fee schedule for the Lee County Athletic Park as presented. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
One other question. Which would you consider to be, and I guess, I'm just taking a wild guess, a synthetic multipurpose field? If you've got an organization that has enough money to rent it for an extended period of time, who maintains the actual control over that situation? The person with the money or Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Recreation would go back to the priority classification plan, or policy to make that call. That's the boat that we hope that we're in, where we have multiple people that want the best amenities that we have.
All right.
We would rather it not sit there unrented.
Yeah, I understand. But I'd rather not see one organization take all the...
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah. If we had a request, for example, for two agencies to use the fields for three straight months, we would flip-flop them and make sure that no one agency had it for all three months.
Thank you.
Can two go in together? So one, like, I don't want to use the afternoon, and I want to use the morning, they can split them up?
We could definitely meet and discuss that.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
If two were to go in together, would that create some tensions surrounding the care of the field in preparation for the second?
It might turn into a blame game. You did this, no, you did this. If something were to happen. But that would be a conversation that me and Whitney and Jennifer and the Parks Board and this meeting can have, if we get to that.
Okay. Motion's been made. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, Lee County Athletic Park positions request. I believe Mr. Keel is still here.
All right, so back on the athletic park again, athletic parks anticipated to open around August of 2025. There's a transition between the project contractor and the county for maintenance. As we get closer to that date, the positions of park operations supervisor and maintenance supervisor are being recommended tonight for the immediate hire to help facilitate the transition, prepare for the park opening, and be involved in the hiring and training of the additional staff that will be needed to operate the facility. There will be additional positions, and they have been requested in the 2025-2026 Parks and Rec budget. You'll see a handout in your, or copy in your handout of these two positions that Parks and Rec is requesting the additional hire for tonight. Last thing I have to add is the investment earnings on the project will be used to cover the cost for these positions for this fiscal year.
Questions for Joseph? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves?
None at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Borbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
So these two positions, as well as the other ones needed, are in the 25-26 budget?
They will be, yes. But what we're asking for tonight is these two positions to go to be now.
Commissioner Mark?
Notwithstanding this request, which will come out of the budget, but next year's budget salaries that will go to the new budget request, are the numbers, are the values and the new staff included in that 18%?
Yes.
Or will it be, okay. Here's my question to you. I recognize that we need people to care for the park. Do we have a comparison of what it would cost to contract that workout compared to the full cost of hiring full-time staff who will grow in their position and grade?
So we haven't done any research on contracting this operation out, just because we feel that maintaining this facility internal is going to be a preference for us, not only to keep the consistency and for that last-minute stuff that pops up. Yesterday was a great example. It stopped raining in the afternoon. I can get my staff out there, and we can get the fields ready to go. But if the contractor, whoever that is, can't make it happen, then we're relying on somebody else instead of relying on ourselves. And I'd rather rely on us than somebody else to do that. When we do contract things out, it's mainly a point of emphasis that we have to, like our lifeguards. We ran into a situation where we couldn't get them, so we had to do that. Also, with our refs and our umpires, we have to do that. So when we're pushed to contract things out, that's when we'll start diving into what that cost may look like. But every contract service we have, it costs more to contract it out than it does to run it in-house. So if we can run it in-house and have full control over it, it'll be cheaper and we'll have full control. Now, if we get into a situation where we don't have the staff... Now, if we get into a situation where, um, we're, we don't have the staff, then that would be an avenue that we could definitely take a look at.
Yeah, I, I'd be curious to see the numbers, you know, of what it would cost. And I recognize that, you know, we've talked about there's, you know, different ways to write the contract, right? Whether it's, uh, you know, the, the, they, they will come in once or twice a week or whether it's a full contract that simply states something such as you will have the fields prepared, whether or not we could utilize our staff in emergency situations like the one that you just mentioned, since we've already approved some of the equipment. But for me, it would be helpful to see the numbers, um, for, for the, for the comparison numbers, for a full contract coverage and for hiring all new staff to care for the park year round.
I, I think I'm gonna have trouble finding, uh, a contractor that can do all those specialized services.
Okay.
There's, um, there's a lot to the athletic park besides just cutting grass.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you gotta find somebody that one can cur, uh, can cut grass with a real mower.
Right.
Um, that's a challenge. It's not just one mower that you have at your house. Uh, somebody that can drag ball fields.
Yeah.
Somebody that can, you know, put bases where they're supposed to be and knows baseball. Uh, somebody who can disinfect turf and drag the turf and do the trails and, um, just a lot of different little pieces. If it was just cutting grass, that might be a little simpler.
I, I understand, yeah. So can I, do I understand from you then, from your, do I infer correctly that all the athletic parks that you queried for numbers and all, that they, they keep their own staff and that there are not really, they're contracting them?
Every one that I've reached out to, even the ones that were not very up, upfront on their fees, um, they were upfront on their, on their staffing plans and they all have their in-house staff.
Good. Thank you.
Joseph, I have one more, one more question. Um, is it still, are we still contracting the referees from like the same?
Yes, sir.
Nothing's changed.
It's the only show in town, so.
For real?
We did a RFQ, uh,
What was, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Yeah.
Who, tell them, Joseph.
Mr. Sharp was asking, um, if we were still using the same booking agent for our umpires and officials.
Oh, thank you.
And, uh, we did a RFQ, uh, maybe two years ago and they were the only ones that put in. So. We tried to add things.
Yeah, the corner on the market, yeah.
We've tried to add things like additional training and we brought our staff in to help with that training, um, just to make their, their product and overall our product better.
Do they supply soccer referees as well?
That I don't know. We haven't gotten in soccer yet, so I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, so, you know, so the soccer's gonna get their own refs since they're, they're private and then they're, they're not in the Parks and Rec program, so they're gonna have to supply their own, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Now, is this park still gonna have an area for concessions and things or like, um?
We're gonna have a, uh, a, a food truck stations like throughout the park.
You gonna charge for those too?
Yes, sir.
Is that somewhere here?
No, th, this is just the field rentals. On the, uh, food trucks, we're gonna do, um, a invitation for all food trucks in the county to fill out our application and go through a process to be an approved food truck through Parks and Rec and they'll pay an upfront fee and, um, me and Whitney are working through that now on what that looks like.
Remind themselves to pay a, uh, Sanford tax too, don't they? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
They got a special business tax for those, don't, don't remind them. Thank you.
Just to clarify for the public's knowledge, uh, the, we hire these individuals prior to thirty June. Uh, will be taking this money, as I understand, from investment earnings on the project?
Yes, sir.
We'll cover it. Okay, just for clarification. Any further questions for Joseph? Thank you, I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve the addition of a maintenance supervisor grade sixty-eight and park operations supervisor grade seventy-one for the Lee County Athletic Park for immediate hire?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I do believe we saw our Lee County Youth Council Representative Abigail Sanchez arrived. Yes, ma'am. Abigail, please come to the microphone. Tell us where you're from, what grade you're in, what your plans are.
Uh, my name is Abigail Sanchez. I am in eleventh grade and what do you mean by plans?
Future, beyond eleven.
She wants to play soccer for the rest of her life?
I, I knew I recognized you. I actually play soccer with her on Sundays. Um, but my plans are, um, actually, I have one credit left to graduate high school. So I'm planning on taking all my classes at CCC while I finish up my senior year. And I do not plan to graduate early. And then I plan to either take the, the free year at CCC and then head over to UNC or Duke to study law and become an immigration lawyer, hopefully.
I'm sorry. And you'll come back as a intern for us, as we had a few.
If they will allow me.
Suzanne comes to mind. Anyways, so, welcome, thank you. Take notes. Uh, not a very busy schedule this evening, so I guess it's easy on you, but some of your predecessors have been pretty busy.
Yes, I have been taking notes so far since I have arrived.
Okay, and so we'll hopefully see you again. Thank you.
Hopefully, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the managers' reports, monthly financial reports. Angelina Noel.
Good evening. So in your agenda packet, you will see the February twenty twenty-five monthly, monthly financial reports, um, for your review. Uh, adware and tax collections are ninety-eight point four eight percent of the adopted budget. The target for expenditures for the end of February is sixty-seven percent. So several departments are over this target budget due to the inclusions of encumbrance. If you remove those encumbrances, we have three departments that remain over target. Um, this is due to the costs associated with unforeseen, um, expenses for elections, uh, annual agreements for IT and vehicle maintenance, uh, replacement, life, safety, capital outlay purchases for, uh, the Sheriff's Department. The December twenty twenty-four sales tax distribution report is also attached for review. As a reminder, these reports run three months behind and we are one point seven two percent ahead of sales tax collections for the same period last fiscal year.
Questions for the interim finance manager, Commissioner Martin?
Nice to hear you. Uh, Angelina, no questions, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, but thank you for stepping up and filling in.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I will point out to the board that our December Article Thirty-nine sales tax was the lowest we've seen in the last, um, four years. So, um, I will be monitoring closely, along with Angelina, the sales tax revenues for the next two or three months to see if we need to take any spending, um, um, actions quickly or not, so, but, um, hopefully it was just a blip and we'll get back to normal. Other items?
Uh, county managers' monthly report.
Sorry.
Go.
Athletic park field construction, the field builder Precision Turf is working on the construction of the multipurpose fields nine and ten with fine grading, drainage and irrigation installation. Fencing and field borders, including backstops, batting cages and dugouts are currently being installed. Staff is currently working with the engineer and contractor on addressing site preparation and issue identified with the subgrade materially associated with the playground area. On-site construction, concrete installation continues around the diamond fields and fieldhouse A. Playground equipment that has been delivered on-site, um, the Tri River Water PO is approved and submitted to turn on water and sewer to the site. Building construction, work continues with installation of plumbing fixtures, fire alarms and storefronts on buildings. The contractor is nearing completion of the painting, painting on the interior and exterior of the buildings. For phase one and two parks projects, um, OT Sloan Park Accessibility Project, construction will be complete the week of March tenth. Parks and Recreation is planning a ribbon cutting ceremony for the new features, um, this Friday at eleven AM. So we'd love to see you guys out for that one. Library building project, the construction there continues with stormwater installation and rough grading of the driveway and parking lot. The concrete foundation slab has been poured with all plumbing and electrical installed under the pad and steel framing has been delivered on-site and crews are working to install all framing by the end of April twenty twenty-five. And I will say, when we drove out to go to the, um, ribbon cutting at Sandley Park this morning, you can see the roof, um, portion of the steel going up. So it was quite exciting to be able to look over to my left as I was getting ready to turn right and see that. So, um, it is definitely coming along. We have had a change order for the foundation drain allowance was approved. Um, this is for the approval to use allowances built into the GMP and is not a request for additional funding. The foundation drain allowance, um, was used to install a four-inch perforated pipe with fabric sock and wash stone around the entire perimeter for a total cost of fifty-four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and thirty-seven cents. The original line item for the foundation drain allowance was forty thousand dollars. The balance, or fourteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars and thirty-seven cents, was taken from the moisture mitigation allowance line. The county manager approved the transfer of funds between the allowance line items originally set in the GMP. Storage courthouse, staff is currently working through submittals on materials from contractors with the, um, the architect, Hobbs Architects, and the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office. Once the, um, preservation office approves all submittals, the construction schedule will be finalized and the construction start date will be established. Horton parking lot improvements, um, earthwork is in progress and has included an identif, has included an identified area of unsuitable soils that needs to be removed. Staff is working with a geotechnical engineer to ensure requirements are satisfied. The project budget included fifty thousand dollars in contingency as unsuitable soils were anticipated. Currently estimated to use thirty-five thousand in contingency to address the issue. The project is anticipated to be complete before the playoffs for the twenty twenty-five season. The Lee County Jail waste pipe replacement, um, inmates have been relocated out of D Block to allow work to begin on March tenth as planned in pre-construction meeting held in January. Inmates in C Block will be moved to D Block once the work is complete. The cons, contract allows for a hundred and ninety-five days for the contractor to complete the work. They did, um, encounter a, a cracked waste pipe outside of the original scope. A change order in the amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars has been approved for them to go ahead and fix that while they're in there. Um, and the project at this point is moving quickly. So we hope they don't encounter too many other things that, um, they did not anticipate. Um, upcoming meetings and events, um, we have rewards and recognitions for our employees tomorrow morning at eight-thirty in the Gordon Wicker Room, if any of y'all can make it. Um, March nineteenth of this week, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Education here at the McSwain Center at six o'clock PM. You should find at your place the agenda for that meeting. Um, it is a brief one-page agenda. Um, so on March twenty-first, as I mentioned earlier, we have the ribbon cutting at OT Sloan Park at eleven AM. Our next regular board meeting will be April seventh here at the McSwain Center at six o'clock. We have our employee appreciation luncheon at April sixteenth here at the McSwain Center at twelve o'clock. We would love to have commissioners there to, um, join, and join us on that day. And on April twenty-first, we have another board meeting at the Civic Center at six o'clock. Couple other things to bring to your attention. I wanna recognize Joseph Keel, who recently graduated from the Revenue Development and Management School, which is a two-year program hosted by NC State and the National Recreation and Park Association. So congratulations, Joseph, on that completion. Um, and you, hopefully he's putting a lot of what he's learned, um, together and setting these fees that you've, um, approved tonight. And also, the city has notified us that they will be doing a, a test shoot for fireworks, um, for July fourth on March twenty-eighth at Kiwanis Park. So, um, I think that's everything.
Congratulations, Joseph. That's why you were filling my ears this morning. Okay.
You should ask him how, how many, what the percentage of pass rate was for his class.
Oh, I don't wanna, oh. I don't wanna, I don't wanna embarrass anybody.
What was your percentage of pass rate for your class?
Uh, we had, we had roughly eighty students in the class and we had, uh, thirty pass. So it was less than half.
You were in the thirty, right?
Almost, almost like jump master school.
I have, I have my, yes.
Almost like jump master school. That had to be a tough one. Did you have a calculator?
Uh, for some of it, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, you all have fifty job openings?
Oh, my word. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Sharp?
Okay, um, every morning I come to work down, uh, Cox Mill Road and make a left on four twenty-one, come towards the Honda Place and I have noticed so much trash. And, um, my friend Doc Oden used to talk about this all the time. I, I'm just gonna say something about it one time. But I, I was hoping, um, I think one time before we had, um, John, the, uh, former county manager, email DOT to have them, uh, maybe take a look at it. They used to do it four times a year. I think they cut it back to three, probably two by now. But, um, but it's terrible. There's no way that, I don't even think people can throw that much trash out. I think it has, some of it has to be blowing, blowing out of the trucks. But, uh, if anybody's been down that way, it's not, it's not a pretty sight, so. If we could get, if we could get that emailed, son, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I hear ya on that one. Commissioner Reeves?
I don't wanna get into deep discussion regarding this agenda for the nineteenth. But, uh, I'm interested in knowing in advance, either in here tonight or by text or phone tomorrow, where we are on the bus garage.
Really, it's up to the school board, so that's what we're gonna work out, bus garage and the auditorium issue.
Commissioner Reeves, at this point, we are not exploring a joint bus garage anymore.
Okay, that's what I was li, listening to hear for.
I'm sorry. Yes. We are currently still, we are currently looking for potential warehouse space that we need immediately, but we're also exploring if there's a warehouse out there that we could possibly buy instead of having to build. Or we're also looking for sites that we could build our warehouse and Colts facility on.
Then would that exclude the property down there? Possibly.
Possibly would, um, exclude that based on the price.
Has, has there been any consideration giving, given to trying to save as much money we can on these different deals? Because it takes two boards in this case to make that happen. And I've yet to hear which way is better for the taxpayer.
On the school bus garage, again, we are fine with the maintenance plan that we're under right now. We had explored the concept to see and have not met with a lot of, what's the word?
Enthusiasm.
Enthusiasm, thank you, um, on it. Mostly because they want the school bus, they want the auditorium before the school bus garage. In addition, we have to pay fair market value for the piece of property, a portion of the property that we won't have to buy and that value on that property is pretty steep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I don't have anything. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm glad Commissioner Sharp brought that up about trash. I, yesterday morning, had the same complaint except on Colon Road saying that some of the trucks coming in now is not tarping the way they should. But, uh, I want to give the Lord thanks for sparing us the storm yesterday and we need to pray for the families in other states and areas that did lose relatives and property. So let's keep them in our prayers. And, uh, as Commissioner Smith said, a great day at Sandley Park. Thank you to all park personnel and everyone involved in that. It's so nice down there. It's a great place for kids. If you don't wanna play on playground, you got the woods. You can go out there and just be kids out there, but very nice. And the county ought to be very proud of that, what we got out there also. And congratulations, Mr. Joseph, on your award, the top thirty. That's all I got. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Martin?
Well, just, uh, congratulations. That's, that's great news. Congratulations. It's, it's great news, congratulations, that's all.
I just have a few items here. The, the, the staff has kept me busy these last few weeks. We had the re-entry council and executive board meeting last week. We went on a field trip to the Harnett County PAL program and that was Autumn Smith, Emma Bach, Angelina Noel and I toured that facility. And then we spent the afternoon at the Veterans Treatment Court. Then, uh, of course, there was a conference call with Go Rail representative and then next, tomorrow I have a Coalition Against Bigger Trucks conference call, um, all about transportation and unfortunately it fits under the Central Pines Rural Planning Organization, so I get har- harangued by all that, so just wanted to say. We were blessed yesterday. I had to take my vehicle to get serviced this morning at, um, Jones Brothers over on Broadway and, uh, the fire chief, the assistant fire chief came in with one of Station Five's trucks and I mentioned to him, I said, I noticed the radio wasn't very busy yesterday, pretty much across the board. And it was, we're very fortunate that we didn't have any disastrous weather and, and that, so thank God for that. Without further ado?
Commissioner-
Yes, ma'am.
Can I point out two things I failed to mention when I mentioned this school, the joint meeting agenda? Wanted to point out to you in the school funding presentation, we have Cara Malonzi with the school, um, school of government, UNC School of Government, coming to make that presentation. And then on the five-on-five committee, um, in addition to whatever the schools are presenting on that, I have arranged for Bobby Ooten from Dare Camp, excuse me, the county manager for Dare County, who was instrumental in that committee being formed and the knowledge behind it, will also be joining us if his five-on-five committee that they're having that Wednesday afternoon does finish in time for him to get here. But just wanted to let you know that those were two things that we have, um, planned in there, okay? Along with the other things you see on the agenda.
That concept has not been adopted by the two boards?
No.
All right.
No. And then I just wanted to let you know I have a thank you note from the Triangle Land Conservancy for our establishing an agricultural development and farmland preservation, uh, program, so. Without further ado, uh, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, no speeding. We are adjourned.